Eileen, opening statement.
Howell Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, October 27, 2025, regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 2, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 2, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 2, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes is excused for tonight. Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Scottson.
Here.
Mr. Cabaracus.
Here.
And Chairman Mertens.
I'm here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Could everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Andy, could you swear in our professionals, please?
Do you swear the testimony you give to the professionals?
I do.
Please state your names for the record.
Charles Cunliffe.
Jennifer Beam.
Witness, the professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. Approval minutes, I see we don't have any, right?
No minutes to approve tonight.
Correspondents?
I have one thing for correspondence. Case number BA 25-05, Jacob and Shira Eli will be carried to December 22, 2025 with no further notice. An extension has been granted to the board through December 31, 2025.
Okay, what was the reschedule for them again?
Till December 22, 2025.
And the extension is till January 26.
No, December 31, 2025.
Okay, anybody here for case number BA 25-05? That will be carried till December 22 without further notice. Okay. And since that was the only resolution, okay, applications before the board. Case number BA 21-28, Freehold Welding. For an extension of time, applicant is seeking a one-year extension of time on previous approved certificate of nonconformity memorialized on September 11, 2023. The applicant was granted certificate of nonconformity confirming that an existing residential use, an existing commercial welding business, multiple principal uses and structures is a pre-existing nonconformity if the property along with the use variance approval for expansion of the welding business and the new vehicle detailing uses, along with a C variance and waivers. A one-year extension of time was previously granted on September 11, 2025, and the applicant is requesting another one-year extension.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is about ready to start the work. The only outside agency approval we're waiting on is Freehold Soil Conservation District, which has apparently taken longer than they had expected. Otherwise, once we receive that, we'll submit it to the board's professionals and hopefully get resolution to compliance. I think there's one or two recommendations which we need to deal with.
Yeah, I think they're still working on some of the stormwater odds and ends with our office, but they're close.
Right, so we hope, we ask for a year just because that's typically what we ask for. Hopefully we won't need anything near that.
Okay, that's right.
Start in the spring, hopefully.
And this isn't a code-compliant case or anything like that. It's an existing welding business that's been there since this property and the adjacent areas were farms going back in the day, so it's, you know, they got a use variance to continue that use. There was also another auto detailing use on the site, so, you know, it's just cleaning up the site for some mods and ends kind of thing, but they're close to compliance.
Okay. You're good, Jennifer?
I am good.
Okay. Members of the board, any, okay, well, entertain a motion at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to grant the requested extension of time for one year.
To have a second?
Second.
Second by Jose. Roll call.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay. Okay. You're welcome, Sal. Okay, case before the board, case number BA 24-20, Julie Rich LLC looking for a use variance, bulk variance in the preliminary and final site plan. The applicant of Julie Rich LLC is applicant and owner seeking use variance, bulk variance in preliminary and final site plan, approval for a demolition of an existing bank and construction of a 5,670 square foot, one-story convenience center and fueling station with other site improvements and premises known as lot 141, Lot 1, 646 U.S. Route 9. This application was previously heard on May 19, 2025, July 28, 2025, and September 15, 2025. Expiration, October 31, 2025. Good evening again.
Thank you. Good evening. So when we concluded our last hearing in September, we had finished the presentation, the public was finished, and we had asked the board not to vote because we wanted to have one last chance to discuss some of the traffic and safety issues that the public raised with the DOT. So we're not here to present any new testimony, but I want to just update the board on what has happened since the last hearing, and then our professionals are here if you have questions of them, but...
Sal, don't mean to interrupt, but just since the last proceeding was different than this one, just put your name in.
Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary G. Kobe Alfieri, and Jacob on behalf of the applicant, sorry. So first, as it relates to the NJDOT, our traffic engineer went to the NJDOT, and the NJDOT felt that the design that has been presented to this board is the optimal design, so they would not change what we had presented to you. One thing that did develop is that there's this new technology, and I'm just going to read briefly what it is, but it's a, it's a state-of-the-art, they call it a Jersey Extension, which is an AI-related technology which scans 360 degrees and picks up whether there's pedestrians or anything, and it helps with the traffic signals during that timeframe. It's a brand-new technology. My client did, the engineer did send it to Charlie, and I'm sure he just got it today or Friday, so I don't know how well-versed he is on it yet, but my client did, the engineer did speak to the NJDOT, and the NJDOT said that they would allow the installation of that technology at this intersection as well. It's about a $50,000 expense that my client would absorb in addition to all the other improvements which they're going to make, which I'll summarize when we get to our summation, but that's something that we would stipulate as a condition of approval, that we would install that technology as well. In addition, in reviewing my notes from the last hearing, we indicated that there would be a bread delivery at the front door with a box truck, and we said 3:00 a.m. But it's not, it may not be 3:00 a.m., it might be 2:00 a.m., it might be 4:00 a.m., but there'll be one, there'll be a bread delivery, off-hours, front door, no idling, box truck. My summary just said 3:00 a.m. Lastly, so I just want to clarify, the time is, it could fluctuate. The last thing is, we discussed the fuel trucks. The fuel trucks, at the time, we said it would not occur between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. In discussing it with Quick Check Corporate, there are occasions where there will be fuel truck deliveries during those hours, but we want to point out to the board that, number one, it's at the front of the property, nowhere near the residence, so it would be between the building and Route 9. Number two, during the fueling, the trucks do not idle. And number three, there's no pump. It's a, it's a different system, well, it's a system that's used for all the trucks, but it's not a pump, so it doesn't make any noise. So those are the clarifications from the last meeting.
And so what was the time again?
Well, it'll occur off-hours, so it could be, what we said on the record was, we would not do it between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m.
Would not do?
Would not, but now there will be occasions where that could happen because the trucks, when they come and make deliveries, they do it through the region, and sometimes it happens at different hours.
On occasion, what are we talking about?
There's no way.
I don't like that word, on occasion, it's like very open-ended.
Yeah, it could happen, we're proposing no limitation because it can happen, it can happen, we talked about the...
We cannot control it, and by the way, the other gas stations along the Route 9 corridor, it's the same scenario. I mean, they will come when the delivery is available. What I think is being represented is that the tanks are in the front, up against Route 9. There's a building, there's additional area, there's a berm, there's buffering, so I hate to say it this way, you buy a piece of property that backs up to commercial property fronting on Route 9, there could potentially be activity in the morning that are all hours. We don't have restrictions. By the way, you could go to McDonald's 24 hours a day, you could go to Taco Bell 24 hours a day, so we don't restrict that, and they attempted to comply, but they're being honest here and saying that they're going to attempt to keep the deliveries off-hours, but they can't control it. It's a state highway. I have no issues with it at all.
And those filling ports usually are between the highway and the pump, the outermost area of the pumps.
Correct. Nowhere near the residence. So those are the three things I wanted to clarify, so if the board has questions, we're here to answer them, otherwise I'd like to do a quick summation and then ask for the vote.
Well, I do have a question because I did bring this up at the last meeting. Were there any other properties along Route 9 south looked at?
My client did not look at other properties.
We really can't ask that? You can't ask that? That's, they don't have to provide us with the information on what, like their request here is based upon this property, we really can't ask them what else they looked at.
Okay, but there was another time that we had the same question, and you even brought it up.
I agree, and I got smacked about it, so...
Okay, I don't want to get smacked either.
No, right, so we can't, we can't ask that.
But just to away concerns, the key to these gas stations is intersections, right? So there's very few intersections heading south that they felt would be adequate for this type of use, so that's why they didn't look, since the last meeting or before.
Okay.
Sal, I think we spoke about the fuel truck deliveries only coming in through the entrance on 9.
Correct. Yeah.
Box trucks, all that other soda, bread and everything, they will maybe come in off of Strickland, or everything's coming in off of 9?
Everything's off 9.
Okay, so that's going to be a condition of approval?
Yeah, and I have a summation which has all of that so that the board would understand what we had agreed to and what the benefits we believe are to this application, but that's one of them.
So your submission's going to have everything we've talked about as far as conditions of approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, professionals, anything?
No.
Let Sal go to summation. Go ahead.
Thank you. So we had two public hearings, we heard from the board professionals, the board members and the members of the public, we've attempted to address everything that was raised during the course of the testimony. We have, we did work with Charlie specifically relating to stormwater management, the buffering, and the intersection improvements, if you will. We agreed to address all of the comments that were contained in the board professional reports. We understand that this is not a permitted use in the zone, but there are permitted uses that will be potentially far more impactful on the neighborhoods, on the neighbors, fast-food restaurants primarily, and also health clubs. We have a vacant building on Route 9 that was a bank, that bank is never going to reopen, so there will be, and that intersection is primed for some heavy traffic commercial development, whether it be this business or Chick-fil-A or something else, that's what's going to go on that corner. The, if it were a Chick-fil-A or a other permitted use, the design would essentially be exactly the same. We will still have that 50-foot berm in the back, we'll still have the stormwater management where it is, it's really just a function of what the use is, because the design is such that that's what that corner is going to have regardless of the use. The traffic improvements, which I'm going to get to in a moment, are pretty significant. If we were to go to the planning board for a Chick-fil-A, for example, my client would not be required to do some of the things that they've agreed to do, such as install that feature, that technology feature that I just talked about. We agreed to install 600-foot of sidewalk along Route 9, that's something that the planning board can't compel. The planning board cannot compel off-site improvements, only onsite improvements. Zoning board, of course, is different, you have more powers, and we've agreed, and again, I'll get into what they are in a moment, but we've agreed to make off-site improvements that would not necessarily be done at the planning board level. So you can't lose sight of the fact that there are benefits coming if this were built that might not otherwise be constructed or installed.
And Sal, where was that 600 feet of sidewalk at then?
The 600 feet...
It's south, it's south of Strickland, which is not their frontage that they're not obligated to do to connect to the sidewalk farther to the south.
So, so again, if we're at the planning board, well, let me get into the, the primary concern was the traffic and the safety of that intersection, so I want to summarize the things that we've agreed to that would be a condition of approval, and specifically an NJDOT permit would have to be obtained containing all of these things that we've agreed to because it affects the intersection. So three things have already been put in place as a result of our application. There's the pedestrian button has been activated, the NJDOT installed a high-quality crosswalk already in place, and they also installed a lead pedestrian interval for Route 9 crossing already in place. The lighting, these are things, new things that we would have to do through the NJDOT's approval. Lighting at the intersection will be upgraded in uniform. All lefts out of Strickland's Western driveway, all lefts will be at the Strickland Western driveway, the Eastern driveway will be right-in, right-out only. At the Western driveway, Strickland Road will remain a two-lane street with sufficient width to bypass a left-turny vehicle in either direction. This was decided so as not to create any issues with the overlapping left-turn lanes that the Moore's Landing Development would have. The existing left-turn lane for the eastbound Strickland Road traffic will be extended approximately 260 feet, it will be more than three times as long as it is today, from 100 to 360. All tractor-trailer deliveries will be limited to Route 9 access only, and we'll provide signage on-site to advise the drivers. We're going to install that sidewalk, which we just talked about, along the south of our property, approximately 600 feet along Route 9. We would agree to install that technology, that Jersey Extension technologies that I described at the beginning of the presentation. We believe as a result of all that, and with the DOT's involvement, and of course, we believe Charlie, we keep Charlie involved in the whole process, that this location will operate safely and efficiently. We've covered all the C variance, we've testified through planning and engineering, and because of that, we would request that the board act favorably and grant both the use variance and site plan approval. That's all I have.
Okay. Professionals?
So the only thing I'll have to add is, they talked about the new technology that they're going to implement. My general understanding of it is, in a general typical crosswalk, you press the actuator, gives a pedestrian some lean time to walk across the intersection, but that's on a timer that'll ultimately run out, right? There's cameras that are installed that monitor 360 degrees at the different crosswalk locations, and if a pedestrian is still in the crosswalk beyond whatever that set time is, it'll extend that until they safely cross the crosswalk, so it is another enhancement to pedestrian safety at the intersection. You did hear them talk about the extension of the sidewalk from, I think, the community, the senior community to the south on Route 9, which was also pedestrian improvement. Really, it's weighing the positives versus the negatives. You know, there is going to be, regardless of any type of use here, you know, what's being proposed tonight versus other permitted uses in the zone, there's going to be traffic associated with that, and this intersection does have some issues, especially that left-turning movement to Route 9, you know, but there are significant pedestrian safety improvements that are coming with this application, which this applicant, you know, if this was a planning board case, would potentially not be required to do, so, you know, you have to weigh that in your consideration of this application tonight.
Board members, any questions?
Can I add, I'm sorry, trouble triggered something. If we were to install a fast-food restaurant there, and you look at the traffic patterns of the Chick-fil-A, just a classic example, because I did one on Route 9 in Freehold not that long ago, and it's a major traffic generator, that traffic is destination-related traffic. People are going to the Quick Check, I mean, to the Chick-fil-A, whereas the Quick Check is primarily passersby. They're heading home from work, they stop the Quick Check, fill up their tank, get something to go. So the fast-food restaurant, although it may not generate the number of trips per day that a Quick Check might generate, it might, but it may not, but it will have more concentrated traffic and destination traffic. People heading north on Route 9 will likely use the gas station rather than, at the Exxon gas station, rather than try and make the turn and come over to Quick Check to cross 9 and then get back and go back on the north. So we think that from a traffic, pure traffic point of view, although this is a heavy traffic generator, every fast-food restaurant will be similarly a heavy traffic generator.
And fast food is only one permitted use at this location.
Right, and the health club...
And once it goes to the planning board as a permitted use, all the off-site traffic improvements are off the table. They cannot evaluate off-site traffic. Here we have, it's up to you guys, but here we have an application that is proposing significant off-site traffic improvements to the benefit of their application that will not be on the table. And let me just be very clear, we've had a number of issues here in the past several years where, be careful what you wish for, right? So like, you know, perhaps Victory Road is kicking themselves because they could have had a solar field, and now they potentially have a warehouse. Like, be careful what you wish for, because when it goes to the planning board, there are definite limitations on what can or cannot be requested from an applicant. So this is a strong corner on a state highway, so I just want you guys to really think about it, because all these things that they've agreed to, the extension of the left-turning lane, the extension of the sidewalk, the reconfiguring of the signal timing, this new technology that they're implementing, goes to the planning board, those improvements go away. So this intersection is difficult, I understand that, and I respect it. However, it's a strong corner on a state highway, so just think about that when you guys are considering whether or not you want this there or something else there, because something's going to go there, let's be very clear. Nothing's going to, it's not going to sit idle. It's a, it's a piece of property on a state highway in Monmouth County, something's going to go there, so we should consider the entirety of the application, that's all I'm asking.
And one last thing, there's a gentleman here tonight from the public, he lives next door to the property on Strickland, he's Lot 2, he had requested that we install at the property line an eight-foot-high fence.
An eight-foot high...
Which we will, as long as it doesn't encroach, which we can approve without relief, as
long as it doesn't encroach into the front yard, setback.
So if the board approves this, the gentleman asked at the beginning of the meeting, I guess he didn't, maybe wasn't at the last meeting, we agreed that we would do that.
Okay. It's good to hear that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sal, we spoke, it was brought up the last meeting, the area where the air fill and vacuum was going to be moved?
Yes. Yes, they'll be shifted away from the intersection.
Away from the ingress?
The ingress, yeah. Not the intersection, the drive-by.
Yeah, we're coming in off of 9.
Yes, and there was, every condition that we agreed to during the course of the testimony would all remain in place, but yes, we did agree to that.
Okay.
One question, Mr. Chairman. So in the previous testimony, I don't remember hearing any estimates of how many average daily trips there would be to the Quick Check.
There were, and there was a traffic study submitted in your packet that you have access to that has that information in it.
And that testimony was provided.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I missed that.
Anybody else from the board? Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve this applicant, their application. I think that there are many things that Quick Check people have done to help facilitate, especially on the traffic on Route 9, which was pre-existing prior to go there. They've continued conversations with DOT to make improvements, and several improvements have been or are being made, so I think that's a positive. I think the setback and the buffers are more than adequate for the residents there based on observations of other Quick Checks in the area and other gas stations in the area, and I believe taking one abandoned property off of Route 9, where there are far too many, is a very positive thing for the township, so I suggest that we approve this.
Okay. I have a motion for, by Mr. Ryan, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oroscow. Could I have a roll call?
Mr. Barillo.
I think Mr. Ryan summed it up pretty well. The applicant has agreed to a lot of significant traffic improvements. They've met the positive criteria, so I am going to vote yes.
Mr. Cantor.
This is in front of the zoning board because the town council did not include this usage in determining this zone, so it's our decision whether or not to override what our town council decided. In my opinion, based on the testimony given, the negative impacts to this neighborhood and to my neighbors in this neighborhood living there do not surpass any of the positive aspects of the proposal, so I vote no.
Mr. O'Donnell.
I'd like to say that every case is based on an individual case, and no two cases are exactly the same. I've done three inspections up there, and I find it horrific even to make a left turn because you don't have a left-turn lane, and the traffic is overwhelming, the area's already outgrown, anything like they want to put in. And I'm only giving my vote based on this particular type of case. If it were at a different location, in a different area, I may consider it more favorably, but my vote is no. my vote is no.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
So I also live in a very high-density area where we have similar issues. That being said, I feel like the applicant has extended, more than extended, what they needed to do to try to make this safe for children, for all residents. I really believe that. I've also been up there several times, and it's, I understand, believe me, I do. My vote is yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
This is without doubt a very difficult decision for me, because I do feel for the people that live in this area, because it does affect them, whether we want it, we don't want it to, but unfortunately, it will. But one of the things that I heard tonight, because I was on the, I was really undecided, but one thing that I do understand, and I've learned, that if we do not approve this, this will probably go to the planning board, and the planning board is going to have no leverage on what is done to improve the site. And as much as I do not like seeing this location being used, because I understand it's a tough intersection, but it's still going to be there regardless if we approve it or the planning board is going to approve it, but at least we have leverage on what we can do. So I will vote yes as well.
Application is approved.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
I thank the people for what you do, and I thank the people that hope you know, that you opened up the can worms, and none of you know what this new technology is. Who's going to look into it? Who's going to oversee all of it? What Ms. Jennifer said about that...
So, Rich, the hearing's done. You could talk to somebody privately if you want, but like...
I will come back every time there's a death or an accident, I promise you that. I think you should think...
Okay, that's, okay.
That's enough.
It was a tough decision for us, so...
It was a very difficult decision. That's enough.
Okay, is there any more further business of the board?
I have nothing, just the next meeting is November 10.
Okay, I think tonight we'll hold off with the classes. Now, Nick, you had asked about the classes, I just want to maybe for us to take a breather tonight, because this was a little overbearing tonight as far as making a decision, so I think I would like the professionals, and Eileen, you'll get more information for us as far as doing those classes that we had.
Yes, I was told that there is money to do it, if you want to do it this year, or you can do it at the beginning of next year.
Okay, so we can do it next year as well.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's good to hear. Okay, see, no, our next meeting is Monday, the 10th, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. See, no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, on favor?